Let the record reflect it. Borninski is absent. Foster?
Good evening.
Ganguly?
Good evening.
Graham Hudak?
Good evening.
Seigris is in attendance. And then Slavens and Sniteman are both absent.
Great, thank you. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris. Does anybody support?
Support.
Supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 4th and 11th, 2024?
Madam Supervisor, I wanted to alert the board that the well, no, first of all. But I wanted to alert the board that we had changed the we had amended the proposed June 4th minutes to indicate that Trustee Ganguly was not in attendance. What was initially in the packet had indicated that she was erroneously, and there are copies in the back. So I would move that we approve the minutes from June 4th as corrected, not amended. And I would move that we approve the minutes from June 11th as presented.
Court? Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we have a three-minute public comment on agenda items only. Agenda items only. Let me look online. If you would like to make public comment online, please raise your hand electronically. Are there any public comments on agenda items only in the room? Okay, all right. Thank you. So can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigris, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our first item is a presentation on the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Wendy, would you like to lead us off with that?
Sure. I'd like to introduce Dave Halasek and Philip Meninio. That's a mouthful. They are our auditors. Once again, I appreciated their work during the audit. I think it went smoothly from our perspective. But mostly, I want to thank Sarah Clay. She really leads the charge in the audit. She handles from the beginning to the end, coordinating getting all the work papers together and is really the legs and all the effort in the finance department. So really, she gets a lot of all of the effort, really, as far as the audit prep goes. So I want to thank Sarah for that and thank the auditors. And I will turn it over to Dave to go over the audit results.
Thanks, Wendy. Again, my name is Dave Halasek, audit partner with Plant Moran. And Phil and I are happy to be before the board this evening to discuss the results of the financial statement and single audit for the Charter Township of Canton for the year ended December 31st of 2023. You should have before you this evening four documents, three which were provided earlier before the meeting started today. The largest being the Act for the Financial Statement. We also have a compliance audit as it relates to your federal programs. And we also have a communication to those charged with governance. So I'm going to speak to each of those a little bit this evening. But the majority of our presentation, as it has been in the past, is the graph package, which we hope summarizes the highlights of the financial activity for the year. As far as the financial statement is concerned, as a result of our audit procedures, we were able to give this year's financial statement an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements, as presented, fairly reflect the financial position of the township as of December 31st of 2023, the revenues, the expenditures, and the footnotes that are included within the document. Again, the highest level of assurance that we can give as a result of the audit procedures performed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil. He's going to walk us through the graphs. And if you have any questions as we go along the graph package, please feel free to stop, Phil, and we'll address those questions as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So as Dave mentioned, these graphs are meant to kind of summarize the bigger financial statements you have in front of you. So first, we'll start off with the first graph that we have shows the revenue of the general fund. So this is the uncombined general fund, so it doesn't include your community center, cable TV, or community improvement funds. And what we wanted to point out here is that you'll see the revenue went down to $37 million this year. That was expected. So last year, you would have had recognized your full ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act award. And so that was about $7.6 million, which makes up the difference. And that was just a one-time receipt. So we would expect to see that difference. The largest revenue source is your state shared revenue or state sources at about 31%. So that was down a little bit from 2022, and we'll show that actually in a couple slides. But once again, there was another one-time payment in there for a census adjustment. And so that one million, and that was for $1 million. So that kind of led to a little decrease there. And then your other large sources, property taxes, which represent about 24%, and those were up about 4% due to increase in taxable values. So on the next slide that we have, we talk a little bit about the property tax and the timing. So really, what we're going to look at is a 1231 2023 column just to kind of show that that's based off an assessment as of 1231 2021. And then it's levy 1231 20 or 12 in 121 2022, and finally recognizes revenue in '23. So if you look at this table, you'll see for the past seven years, there's been approximate growth of at least 4%, which is a result of a combination in increasing in the taxable values of existing properties as well as development within the township. The next graph we have shows the taxable values as of assessment dates. And really, what we like to show from this graph is just you can kind of see from 2007 to 2012 during the recession, there was a decrease of about 20% of the total taxable value. And since then, there's been that steady and increased growth up, which can't just be done from just normal increases alone. It's also because of continued development within the township. The next graph, so as I mentioned earlier, state shared revenue is one of the largest sources for the township. So this graph kind of shows for the past 14 years. And this is based off the state of Michigan's year-end. Just that's how they report. So you'll see for the past 14 years, that kind of steady increase up. And then really, you'll see a couple years in 2011 and 2022, there's that like orange or brown census adjustment bar. So those are one-time payments. They just kind of correct it based on, once they get new census data updated. And so that's why you'll see the slight decrease because of that payment last year. If you were to exclude that, state shared revenue increased actually about 5% compared to last year. The next graph we have is looking at the expenditures. So you'll see those are down about 3% to $40.6 million. And really, this decrease is attributable to just a decrease in transfers out. So in the prior year, there was transfers out of the general fund relating to the ARPA proceeds to other funds. But in 2023, there were still significant transfers out for debt service and capital projects. Other than that, general government expenses remain fairly consistent with 2022, so no significant swings. The next slide we have, this is looking at your annual expenditures. And it's comparing it to your unassigned fund balance. So unassigned fund balance is that fund balance, which isn't legally restricted, committed, or signed for any specific purpose. So we usually like to use that as a comparative to your annual operating expenditures. And so your unassigned fund balance increased about $836,000 this year. And as compared to your annual operating expenditures, it's about 18%, which we would consider healthy. The next few slides that we have are going to be looking at your legacy costs. So this is going to be looking into your pension and your OPEB. So the first one we like to show is looking at the pension contributions for the past seven years. And really, what you'll see is that orange bar is the additional contribution. So every year, you're required to make by the actuary calculates required contribution that you need to make. But in addition to that, there has been the orange bar, which is that over the top, which helps, you know, increase the amount in the trust fund, which can then earn income. And so this past, in 2023, you'll see that there was about $750,000 over the required contribution that was made to the pension plan. And so if we go to the next slide, kind of showing how those help, you'll see this is the funding percentage as of the actuarial evaluation. Though it is important to note, this will look a little different than what you'll see in the financial statements. For under GASB 68, there is just slight difference on how those are calculated. One of the main being what's called asset smoothing. So they use that in the funding valuations to prevent any, like, when they're calculating your required contributions, to kind of take any gains or losses and allocate it over four years just so your payments aren't, your required contributions aren't significantly going up or down. Whereas in the financial statements, you're required to measure that at market value. So you'll see those significant swings. So they won't be significantly off from each other, but they won't exactly tie. So you'll see it's about 74% as of 2022. And it's important to note for your pension plan, that's based off MERS year-end is when they do their reporting. So it's about a year lag every year for that information. So you'll see that your measurement date for your pension plan will be as of 2022. Which if you go to the next slide, this kind of will show you. So your OPEB plan is as of 1231 2023. That's the measurement date, and your pension is as of 1231 2022. So. And it's important to note that what we're showing here is just the liability. So these are net of any assets. So your pension plan was about 65% funded and has a net liability of $62.2 million. And you'll see the breakout here between, with the largest portion being police and then fire being about a third. And then for the OPEB plan, that's 49% funded and has a liability of about $35.7 million. And so there's a larger portion related to your general employees there. Combined, it's about $97.9 million of unfunded liability. But it's important to note that for both plans, they are above the state's requirement for unfunded status. So the state requires 60% for pension and 40% for OPEB. So the township is definitely above both of those requirements.
Can I ask, the percentage funded? I don't see on this page. Are you getting that from?
The percentage funded, so it won't, we don't show the net assets on here, but that would be in the financial statements.
Gotcha. Okay.
Redefine the page.
Sorry for interrupting your chat for a while.
Yeah, so if you have your financial, it would be 78 of the big packet would be the best way to see it.
Gotcha.
So that'll show. And once again, as I know on the earlier graphs, it kind of just relates to where you're seeing the net. So as mentioned, 2022, towards the end of it, was a, the market was pretty low. So there was a bigger net investment loss. And so with that, the valuation done by MERS for the funding would have smoothed that out a little more. So that's why the funding percentages will differ. Whereas this is reported just based on market value. The next slide. So this shows the OPEB, so similar to the pension, this is the OPEB funding percentage based on the funding valuation. So you'll see that's at 43.1, just a little bit down. Once again, because of 2022 with the market performance. And for OPEB, the funding valuations are done every two years. But really, like, what we like to point out is just from 2014 to 2020, that significant increase of about 33% is big and huge and gets you over that state threshold. The final slide we really have is just to kind of overall wrap up the year-end review. So there is a healthy financial condition at year-end. This is due to long-term budgeting practices are continuing to pay off. Development of tax base within the township helps with the growth. And the township is positioning itself to address these legacy costs as shown in that graph of those additional payments and putting money into those trusts to earn income. While 2022 was a down year, most years you'll, if you look on that same 78 page, you'll see prior years are to have income countering that. So despite the healthy financial condition, we always like to just say there is still potential for uncertainty such as, you know, inflation, market volatility, and housing market or rate of growth declines and that. Something to always keep in mind. That's why you're kind of building up fund balance. And then really, the last thing we want to point, which won't show on this slide, but we wanted to just comment on, is we do notice that there was planned and expected use of fund balance for capital projects. So one of the main things we noted is that during our testing is in this current year, there's about $6.7 million of capital expenditures in your main CI Capital Project Fund. Whereas in prior years, that would have been, or last year, that would have been $2.7 million. So that's about a $4 million increase in expenditures for capital, which was expected and using for fund balance. And that capital project fund is fully supported by transfers in from like the general fund. And so those were all budgeted to be used towards helping with those capital projects.
I have a quick question for Wendy. So the $4 million, is that something to do with the ARPA funds that we are using this year? Or not really?
Well, there was a transfer of about $4 million from the ARPA to go into the Cherry Hill Village, which the board had earmarked. But additionally, there was about $4 million of planned capital projects this year from that old CIP, the 2019 through 2023 CIP, that we transferred from the general fund into the Capital Project Fund to pay for those capital projects. But again, that was a planned spending. You know, the board has been doing long-term projections. So while we did spend fund balance, it was a planned use, it was a planned spending of fund balance. So I think, not to put words in Philip's mouth, but I think it was, you know, trying to explain that we had a use of fund balance. The township has prepared itself to try to address some long-term capital needs. And despite using fund balance, we are still in a healthy financial position. So we've.
Yeah, that's what we were trying, you know. Sometimes the use of fund balance can cause concern because you're wondering if a structural deficit is in play. Normal operations, you don't have enough revenue to cover the normal operating costs of providing governmental services. I think what Phil was trying to say is that doesn't appear to be the case here at Canton for this year because there was budgeted transfers out to cover long-term capital needs. So you wouldn't anticipate those types of dollars going out to cover those type of large capital expenditures on a recurring basis. If you did actually run into a situation, you know, where you had something like that, you'd probably consider maybe, you know, maybe bonding for a large capital project so you're not incurring those costs in all in one year. But you had some reserves in place where you could cover those costs out of existing fund balance. It was a planned use, as Wendy had indicated. And we just wanted to make sure, really remind you of that as part of our presentation.
I don't know how that shows in our, because we have a transparency dashboard, as you know, that the board implemented for three years. And residents can see the ins and outs of the budget, financial documents. And I don't know if you've looked at that or if you could see, you know, what you're talking about, the long-term capital funds. And I don't know if it shows to that level. It shows line items, which anybody who looks at it can see, you know, that we're very transparent about the budget.
Yeah, so we have our priority-based budgeting dashboard that kind of shows what the planned budgeted uses of fund balance are by program. I'd have to go back and look to see if it specifically addresses the capital needs. But we also have some information that we are required to send to the state every year, which talks about our budget and how much we've spent on capital. And we also post that to our website that has more specific debt spending, capital spending, where our pension costs are. There's just a few different items that is important to the state of Michigan that they require all municipalities to report on. And then we post that to our website as well.
The transparency is definitely there with the budget.
Can you remind me, what is the recommended percentage of fund balance?
Well, GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, would say around 15% would be a good number. I mean, I always say it depends on the type. I mean, a city might be different than a township. And it also can depend on what part of the year you levy your taxes. So, but in Canton, it's, you know, 15% is probably a good bogey.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm trying to, I'm curious. I'm on page 21 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And I'm also on page one of the Plant Moran presentation. And I'm looking at the revenues analysis. But then I'm also looking at the revenues analysis, and I see a $2.8 million revenue line, which says other revenues, that's on the annual financial report, but it's not necessarily on the Plant Moran report. And I was just curious what that $2.8 million of other revenue might be and why we see that, like, that difference between the 3.6 million or the 36.9 million on this presentation. I'm sorry, yeah, 36.9 million versus the 39.7 million of revenue on the annual financial report on page 21. Anybody know what that $2.8 million is? Sarah, I figured you might. So you're saying, since anybody who's listening to this recording at a future date or watching on Zoom, that because we have enterprise funds inside of that? Or?
Do you want to come up to my microphone? Or do you want me to? They can't hear you. I can, I'll try to explain it. We have, so of our.
I didn't hear you, Sarah.
You can come up, you can come up. There's a GASB, it's a GASB 54 that required us to combine specific, what we would have called special revenue funds. And we still call special revenue funds for budgeting purposes. If they don't have a segregated revenue source that's specifically restricted for a specific purpose, we can't call it a special revenue fund in our financial statements. So the summit, which is heavily financed by the general fund, the fees that the summit collects for accounting purposes are considered a general fund because those funds aren't legally restricted for summit activities. Same thing for our Community Improvement Fund and our Cable TV Fund. So those four, plus the general fund. So those four funds for the financial, for the Act for that you have, the big document, are all combined as part of the general fund that you see on the front pages. If you go to the budget statements on page.
87.
87? Yeah, if you go to, oh, yeah, that's a better statement that I was looking for. If you look at page 87 of your big thick book that you have there, it shows what the different budgets are and the funds that are combined with that. Furthermore, if you go to page 100 to 101, we've got the Community Center Fund, the Cable TV Fund, and the Community Improvement Fund. If you look at those three funds and look at the other revenues, that will, I mean, you can see that there's an other revenue for Community Improvement for half a million dollars. That's probably interest income, would be my guess. Same thing with the Community Center, there's $28,000, that's probably interest. And then the Cable TV Fund's $126,000, and that's probably interest. So the majority of that is going to be interest income. But I can get you a specific answer and let you know for sure what that is. And we can show you a breakdown of that general fund compared to the other funds if that's something of interest to you.
If I had a specific concern, I would ask for specific information. But that general explanation satisfies my curiosity about where that $2.8 million is and kind of how that worked out. And then my next question was, on the same page, page 21, I see that for general, it says fund balance at the end of the document at $39 million. And then I hear us talk about having $7 million of unrestricted fund balance in this presentation. So I'm assuming we might have a little bit of the same kind of an answer with regards to a 101 specific account versus the other funds itself. But then I would also assume that maybe there's a difference between restricted and unrestricted funds in a fund balance? And like, if, like, I don't know what that means, what would be a quick kind of answer of what a restricted fund might be versus an unrestricted fund?
So in our financial statements, just as a general, if the board wants to follow along with it, if you look at page 71 of the big book, it does show a breakdown of what that fund balance equals. But a restricted fund balance for the general fund, for our purposes, is if we have any prepaid expenses. So for example, if we prepaid an insurance, and I don't know specifically what that relates to in here, but if we prepaid an insurance policy or if we prepaid some software expenses, we've already paid it, but we haven't expensed it yet in our financial statement. So we can't say we have fund balance available because we've already paid it. We know we're going to expense it the next year. It's not available. We've already paid the cash.
Like an accrual issue, kind of?
Yeah, it's almost an accrual issue. We've prepaid it, we don't have cash. It's just, from an accounting perspective, it hasn't yet been expensed, and it'll only get expensed next year. So we have to kind of earmark that fund balance because we know it's already gone. The other big ones for us that are restricted are the peg fees. So we've got $2.7 million of money that we have received from cable companies that are required to be spent for capital regarding, as a result to cable. We can't spend that for anything else. Also, the other big one is $1.2 million for building permit activity. So to the extent that our revenue that we collect for building permit fees exceeds the expenses related to building permits, the state requires us to restrict that. We can't use that for general operating activities of the township. So we have to kind of set that aside for use for building. That's the Construction Code Act of the state of Michigan. So that's earmarked for that. Then we have about 2.3 committed for the board-related goals that the board back in April have set aside money for that's in the general fund, such as ZB West Park. There's about a million dollars set aside for that. And I think there was about half a million dollars left for other board priorities. There was, we can give you a breakdown of what was still in that number, but it was the board-related goals from that workshop back in April. And then the other assignments are the fund balances of the other funds. Because the board, you know, we have a fund balance established for the Community Center Fund, the Community Improvement Fund, and Cable TV Fund. That's their fund balances. Then we also set aside as an assignment the subsequent year's budgets that the board has adopted because we've already earmarked some of the fund balances for those as well. So let's.
Oh, cool. Now, I also see in here, we've assigned $5.6 million to future capital needs, board goals, and legacy cost pre-funding. I think when we had talked, when we had met last time, we had talked about how we wanted to do an additional $1 million on top of what we pre-fund for pension. That, what I would assume would be a part of that $5.6 million.
It could be a part of that. We just know there's a number of board priorities we set aside. It's not, the board hasn't formally committed it, but we've set aside $5.6 million to make sure we are leaving us enough fund balance at the 18.5% fund balance level that the auditors had spoken to. We're wanting to make sure we, here's kind of the playing money, you know, for the board priorities and the other needs of the township. But we want to make sure we're saving enough and setting enough aside for, to make sure we stay financially stable moving forward.
As we will and as we always do.
Absolutely.
And the Community Improvement Fund, is that for the summit? Or is that for just capital?
Township-wide projects. So there's, the facilities department has money set aside for there for like, if you remember the budget presentations, we set money aside for rooftop units that might go or mechanical systems that might go. Sometimes there's paving projects in there. So it's really township-wide community improvement, not for any specific buildings. It's for specific, if we knew there was a rooftop unit in the summit, we would budget it specifically in the summit. But facilities, as we have aging infrastructure, you know, wanting to put money aside, we put it in the Community Improvement Fund because we don't really know what building it's going to be used for. It's just there in case we need it.
So having the $7.3 million of unassigned capital and then using that as 17% of our annual budget, which definitely says we're above the 15% threshold, you've still got $5.6 million for future capital needs that's not a part of the $7.3 million.
Correct.
And you've got $5.1 of community improvement capital already in there. So potentially, you're at, forgetting the $7.3 million of unassigned capital, you've still got an initial, up to $10 million of capital improvement in fund balance, and we still haven't come close to that 15%. So when I read the Plant Moran analysis of our financial position, it does make sense that we are in a pretty strong situation, and we are addressing capital. And then we're talking about potentially looking at bonding for future capital needs on top of what we've got assigned in fund balance as well?
Yep, when we look at the new priorities.
Or no?
Not at the.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, we have not been.
But I would like to see those rates go down a little bit, too, before we start talking about financing anything, especially for this flush. And we've got 49. If you assign dollars that you haven't, not the accrual. And we've got 49. If you assign dollars that you haven't, not the accrual issue, but let's say we assign dollars in a cap, what is, is there a process for unassigning dollars potentially and maneuvering them?
The only formal process we need to go about is for the committed dollars. So if the board wanted to change their commitments for the ARPA spending, we would have to come back formally to the board and uncommit those. These are just earmarked set-aside dollars that can be done at a management level, leadership level, but it is not formally committed by the board by any means, and it's not legally restricted. So it's, you know, we've got flexibility with those dollars.
Thank you to the Finance Department and to Plant Moran for answering those questions.
Yes. And as we do, in every RBA that we do, we make sure it's within the budget also. We don't spend outside of that. That's why we've been so successful. Tanya?
I have a quick question. So, you know, we have assigned all this for capital improvement, right? And heaven forbid we come below the budgets because it's not happening because costs are going up for, you know, improvement, capital improvements. So does that go into the unassigned fund balance for next year? I'm just trying to understand that. Like, what would happen if we had still funds remaining in those, you know, that we assigned for this year, but we haven't used that? That moves to the next year, then?
Correct. So our budget, our theoretical budget, where you see the subsequent year's budget as adopted for $7.1 million, if we don't spend $7.1 million, that just rolls right back into the fund balance. And then we kind of start, we take a look at that and say, what do we need to spend? Do we want to earmark some more dollars for capital purposes? You know, do we want to enter unassigned fund balances? Does the board want to change the unassigned fund balance level? It just, if you don't spend it, it goes right back into fund balance each year.
And really, thank you. You guys are experts in this. You've been seeing it for the last four years, how you're budgeting for like, the next three years, and how the budget is super conservative. And we always like, you know, we always have funds remaining, I feel, at the end of the year, like we have done. We didn't, we'd never go over. Sometimes we may, but very rarely we go over because it's a very, very conservative estimate we have assigned funds. So, and then still on top of that, we said 17 or 18.5% do we have remaining? How much do?
David's going to take us through that. He's going to take us through the book.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think we were going to be done covering the financial information unless there's something.
You're not going to take us through the 173-page book?
Well, as much as I'd love to do it, I don't know how many people we'd lose for that. But as in the past, I know that the township has this information. As you go through it, I know finance is available for questions. We certainly are available for questions, you know, at any time during the year as it relates to this document. The other, one of the other deliverables we had is in addition to the financial statement audit, when a local unit of government spends over $750,000 of federal dollars, you're required to have a federal compliance audit as well. So the township did have a compliance audit. Based on the formula for testing, we only needed to test one major program. It was your block grant program. So what I can tell you is there's two reports within that document. One relates to internal controls. And while we don't issue opinions on the financial statement from an internal control standpoint, we do test, evaluate, and if something comes to our attention that's a material weakness or a significant deficiency, we document it in this compliance supplement or compliance report. So as a result of our testing, nothing came to our attention that would have risen to a level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness. So there's nothing to report in that, in that communication. In addition, as far as the compliance audit itself, we do test the compliance requirements as indicated by the compliance supplement. As a result of the testing of your block grant program, we had no compliance items to report with that program as well. So essentially, that both of those are the equivalents almost of some unmodified opinion. No exceptions. And then finally, our communication to those charged with governance, you may recall prior to the audit starting, you'd have received a communication from myself that talked about our planning and the scope and what essentially we were going to do is relate to our audit approach. We had identified where we thought the most risky areas for misstatement would be in a financial statement, how we were going to address those to ensure that that risk was reduced to an acceptable level. We also gave each of the board members the opportunity to reach out and contact us if you had any concerns in a particular area. And if there weren't any concerns, we'd be able to incorporate that into our audit process. On the back end of this, we really don't have anything to report from a communication standpoint. As I had indicated earlier, we really didn't find anything from an internal control standpoint we needed to report out on, nor our compliance. So it's really that communication is about as clean as you'd want it to be from that aspect. The other section is a legislative and informational update. This isn't required, but something that we always try to accumulate and provide our clients, just letting them know kind of what's out there that might affect their local unit of government. I understand that, you know, the folks at the township are involved in many associations and get this type of information. We're trying to focus more on a financial reporting standpoint. So just, you know, if you, if I were to look at these, two of the things that really jump out relates to some of the more recent and upcoming accounting pronouncements. So, you know, your finance staff have really done a terrific job of reporting and not only reporting, recording the financial information and financial activity during the year, but over the last couple of years, really implementing some pretty heavy lift standards. While it might not look that way when you're looking at the financial statement report, the amount of documents, contracts that they had to rifle through, and then assess on whether or not they were applicable to the upcoming or to those standards, really, really was a heavy lift. We did test those and were comfortable with not only how those were assessed, but how those are reported out on. And this is just as a reminder on a couple of those, yes, the implementation period's over, but any modifications to any existing lease or IT arrangement contracts do need to be, you know, reviewed on an ongoing basis. The inflation multiplier, I mean, that's for the second year in a row. It's above the 5.0 ceiling that was put in place as part of Proposal A, way back in the early 90s. So while that multiplier is at 5.1%, taxable value for the citizens on a non-capped, on an uncapped home is limited to that 5%. So, you know, good news that values are rising higher than the taxes that would be attributable to the property tax bills. Then finally, just some upcoming pronouncements. While I did say there was some significant, you know, past standards that need to be implemented, you know, GASB 101 as it relates to compensated absences is going to require, you know, some research, actually has some historical information and trends as far as use of, you know, sick and vacation time and how that may impact this liability, reporting of this liability on a go-forward basis. We've got some webinars out there that the finance staff can look and help them kind of, you know, get through to that reporting requirement when it's implemented. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on anything we covered this evening, or perhaps anything we didn't cover.
Where would the, so the monies that were coming in with grants, and where would that show up then on the transparency dashboard? For each project, depending on what the project is, it would show at that level?
I don't think the transparency dashboard that the state requires has any level of financial or federal awards required reporting on there. And it would not show in our priority-based budgeting either. So if that's something, you know, from a township board perspective that we want to add to the, our finance webpage, you know, we can talk with maybe our communications staff and get something reported out on that. You're welcome.
There's, I just, there's a note here, I mean, there's a 170-page document showing all the summary of what we've done here and what you've talked about. And I'd just like to, it's to the Board of Trustees and citizens of the Charter Township of Canton. I just want to read some of the highlights because not everybody can see it. But it talked about, it talks about the township and Plant Moran and Canton Township Establishment in March 1834. There's some good information here, but according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, unemployment in the township remained low at 1.6% for December, compared to 4% in the county and 3.5% in the state, which is, and there's been a lot of residential development still. And commercial activity, in 2023, we had eight new commercial office projects, industrial activity, six industrial projects, public development plans with parks and other things that we're working on, different park expansions. Talks about the Master Plan Advisory Board. And then it also talks about the long-term financial planning. So the board maintained a fund balance which required a minimum of 15% as we said for general roads, fire, and police unassigned fund balance. And basically, it monitored 14.85%. And it also talked about the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, awarded this certificate of achievement, I think we brought this up at a board meeting, achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the Charter Township of Canton for its comprehensive financial reporting for the fiscal year. It's the 31st year the Charter Township received this prestigious award for the financial status that we're in. We brought that up. So great job. Yeah, we have to, that's right. You have to have that big certificate. So the prep of the report would not have been possible without the efficient and dedicated service of the staff at the Finance Department. We wish to express our appreciation to all members of the department who assisted and contributed to the preparation of the report. Thank the Board of Trustees for their support for maintaining the highest standards of professionalism in the management of the Charter Township of Canton's finances. So thank you very much for your report. Does the boards have any other comments or questions? I mean, we have a lot to read through, and the residents can definitely see in the transparency dashboard that we have out there all the details.
I would just point out that statutorily, I am required to have a copy of this at my front desk or counter. So if anybody does want to, in the next couple of days, come through and read it, stop by the clerk's office. And it'll be on the website, I assume, once it's approved by the board or received by the board, which is item C1 or C3 tonight.
Correct. It's on the consent agenda, but we do post it on the finance webpage as well.
All right.
If anyone has trouble reading the transparency dashboard, we can help them with that, too.
I just want to say thank you to the finance team. You did an incredible job. Do every year. And thank you to Plant Moran. I think we've worked with you since I've been on this board. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for retirement recognition for Carolyn Cox. Carolyn's not here today, but we're still going to recognize her. We can pass this on to her. The instance is a resolution, I guess. Yeah, we have to read it. So whereas Carolyn Cox has completed 23 years of full-time service to the Canton community, whereas Carolyn started her career with the Canton Finance Department as an accountant for eight years and worked as the Budget Benefit and Internal Audit Manager for the past 15 years. And whereas Carolyn demonstrated dedication to the Finance Department and entire organization by serving as a steadfast and compassionate leader to all who work with her, and whereas Carolyn played a vital role in delivering excellent financial services to the township by developing and monitoring the annual budget and by managing both accounts payable and grants reporting. She has been a caring mentor and invaluable resource to all who had the privilege of working with her and leaves a legacy of hard work and commitment to the organization. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize and extend its appreciation to Carolyn Cox for 23 years of dedication to the Canton community, wishes her a happy and healthy retirement.
Support.
Motion made by myself, supported by Clerk Seeger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Great. So we'll give this to Carolyn.
Great. She did want me to pass along. I did invite her, but she said she's doing what retired people do, which is travel.
Yes.
So she is out of town, but she wanted me to pass along her gratitude and said it was her pleasure to live in this community and serve this community for the last 23 years. So she wanted me to pass along her thank you and appreciation to the board.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of International Association of Firefighters Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan. C2, consider approving the annual licensing renewal of Power DMS. And finally, item C3, request approval of the Township's 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Support, please?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider authorizing EV Co. to install a DC fast charger at Fellows Creek Golf Course.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to authorize the use of Fellows Creek Golf Course as a location for EV Co. to purchase and install one DC fast charging station at their expense pending legal review and approval.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. In November of '23, MSD published an RFP for the procurement of EV charging stations as well as a maintenance agreement. The township received six responses to the RFP with EV Co. being one of the top contractors. EV Co. has presented an offer to the township to purchase and install at their expense a DC fast charger at Fellows Creek Golf Course. This includes pre-planning, installation, testing, launch, promotion, maintenance, and support of a 360-kilowatt power split system, 750, 1,000 KVA transformer, and construction. The terms of the agreement are pending legal review and approval. So Deputy Director Salinas, would you like to say anything else?
Sure. Just a couple notes. EV Co. will also submeter and monitor the power, and they'll be responsible for the power of the usage. We do get a cost split model. It'll be 80/20. 20% come into the township on all the funds that are received from charging. In that particular unit, it's roughly 200 miles of range per 30 minutes of charge. So I thought that was worth noting because I know some of the DC fast charges can vary. So that particular model gives you roughly 200 miles every 30 minutes of charge.
Thank you. So this is the first of the Level 3s in Canton Township. It's going to be near the highway, and that's where the state is putting a lot of them. So this will help residents coming on and off the highway and just going there to charge their stations. Right now, we have about 900 registered EVs in Canton Township.
Sandwich at the clubhouse.
That's right. And it is, believe it or not, the clubhouse is open year-round. And people golf year-round in Canton Township. Any questions?
I just wanted to comment that a few years ago, John came up when he was the Facilities Manager. He did an extensive study of all the EV charging options that we have. And I am very excited that we are probably putting in the first EV chargers in our community parking lots. And this is going to be probably the beginning of many that we have. And this is a Level 3 charger, so I think it'll be very useful. And it's put in a place where, you know, it's used, it's, the parking lot will be used quite a bit because, you know, we have a lot of golfing that happens in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Who else? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider an increase of purchase order 2024 as listed Sidewalk Gap Design.
Support.
Oh, no, you didn't do it.
Make the motion.
I'm so used to Kate doing those.
That's all right. I'm going to do this as one resolution. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to reduce purchase order 2023-2029 to $150,000. And I move to increase purchase order 2-2024-1474 by $44,500 to Fishback to bring the total amount of purchase order 2024-1474 to $286,000.
Now, support, Tanya?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Engineering Services is requesting to increase purchase order as listed by $44,500 to Fishback to bring the total amount of PO as listed to $286,000. The increase is being requested to accommodate the design of the sidewalk at Ford and Ridge Road, which was not in the original request for proposal. To fund this increase, Engineering Services is also requesting that a purchase order as listed be reduced to $150,000. The original amount of that one was $225,000, which exceeded the expected amount needed. John, would you like to add anything?
Just one note. This was increased near the ZB West Park that we have under construction as well, on Northwest Corner of Ford and Ridge intersection. Initially, we focused on places of worship and school first. And we took this as an opportunity while the park is being built to close those gaps as well. And Fishback being already on board with a lot of our design and our gap program, we took the opportunity to make sure that we.
took the opportunity to make sure that we had this taken care of as well once the park is built.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Summer?
Is this from the funding that we received from the state of Michigan for sidewalk gaps?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Tell you, whoever wrote this model resolution must hate the clerk, making me read all those different purchase order numbers, but tell Dave Norwell I'm having a conversation with him when he gets back.
I will relay that.
John's like, whoops. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G3, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the pool dehumidification HVAC unit at the summit on the park.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order for Quality Air Systems in the amount of $558,000 plus a $58,800 contingency, making the total amount $613,800 to replace RTU 3 at the summit on the park.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. Beginning in '24, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan, which included the replacement of the rooftop unit for the aquatic center at the summit on the park. The pool rooftop unit is over 11 years of age with a projected lifespan of 10 to 15 years. In recent years, the rooftop has experienced numerous issues related to the functions of the unit, including its ability to dehumidify the space properly. The budget, of course, will be, this is a budgeted expenditure, coming from capital outlay, buildings, and improvements. John, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, this is a big one for us. Obviously, we budgeted appropriately, so we had that accounted for, too. With issues coming up with the current rooftop unit there, anytime there's an issue, we have to close down the pool, and obviously, that affects a lot of folks. And these dehumidification units do not have as long of a lifespan as your normal rooftop units. We do also want to note that Quality Air that has awarded this was the lowest bidder, and they have, In Event is the product that's going on there, Roof, and they have done this at John Glenn High School, Garden City High School, and Wald Lake Western as well they're going to be doing next month. Another note that we can add to it, the refrigerant restrictions have changed, so refrigerants, all of them are right now, are 410A, are going to be phased out January of 2025. So this rooftop unit is going to the 454B, which is environmentally more friendly, and it is 5% to 10% less refrigerant usage, so it's more efficient. So we made sure that we had timed that appropriately on such a unit as this. This thing is as big as a mobile trailer. It's huge. So this will impact, once we do the lift, the crane lift and pick day, we'll have probably a four-hour closure at some locations at the summit, so we'll plan that appropriately as well. And the last note, too, Quality Air does have a licensed dehumidification technician on staff. So that was another bonus for us that they can install and they can also service it for us.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yeah, the pool, we've been lucky this year, but we kept losing it last year.
Yep. We kept limping along a little bit here, and we saw some issues when it was down for a day. You know, it affects the roof. It affects the paint, the grout. So it's a trickle effect of everything, so this timing is coming beneficial to us.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G4, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning code of ordinances regarding the Grand River Road Brighton LLC rezoning.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning code of ordinances. The Charter Township of Canton has provided the attached ordinance of planning application number 049-RZ-8219, which rezones tax parcel number 049-99-0001-708, from C3 Regional Commercial and Corporate Park Overlay District to C3 Regional Commercial and Central Business District Overlay.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. The applicant proposes to rezone parcels listed from C3 Regional Commercial and Corporate Park Overlay District to C3 Regional Commercial and Central Business District Overlay. This parcel is located on the south side of Ford Road between Lots Road and the eastern boundary of Canton Township and contains a multi-tenant commercial building that includes the Guitar Center. In '22, a special land use was approved for blossom behavioral wellness to occupy part of the building for therapy services, which is currently at the stage of building permitting. The applicant proposes an indoor recreation use to occupy other tenants based on the south side of the building. Indoor recreation uses are not permitted in the Corporate Park Overlay District, but are permitted uses in the C3 District and CBD Overlay. At its meeting on June 3, '24, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. So John, do you want to add anything, or Patrick afterwards? Patrick?
I have nothing else to add, but I can answer any questions.
Summer, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you.
Any questions for the board?
So is this like a children's play area, based on the pictures that I submitted? And that's not permitted in that district? We don't? That's why we had to change it? Is that the reason?
Correct. The Corporate Park Overlay District doesn't allow for that type of use, and any use in the Corporate Park Overlay is a special land use, so anything that's proposed there would require a public hearing. So with a multi-tenant center, the owner opted to propose to rezone it out of the Corporate Park Overlay into the Central Business District Overlay to allow for the proposed use that's in the application to be a permitted land use.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider special land use for Canton Banquet and Convention Center.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, which is the approval of the special land use for Canton Banquet and Convention Center. Whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval for a banquet and convention center at 4127 South Lots Road on parcel number 71-141-99-0027-716, located on the east side of Lots Road, south of Michigan Avenue. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria, voted seven to zero to recommend approval with conditions. As the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in Section 23-03 subsection C of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the special land use for a banquet and convention center use at 4127 South Lots Road in planning application number 141-SLU-8263. As the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to the items noted by staff being addressed or corrected at the time of site plan review.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. The applicant proposes to develop a banquet and convention center on a 12.34-acre site on the east side of Lots Road, south of Michigan Ave. The facility will have several banquet rooms with pre-function space, including outdoor event patios. The center will also include a second floor with offices and customer suites. The Lots Road frontage along the site is paved with direct access to Michigan Avenue. A special land use for a banquet and convention center was previously approved by the Township Board on January 11, '22. However, the special land use approval expired. Prior to the Township Board's approval of the special land use, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the special land use on December 6, 2021. Since the special land use expired, there have been slight changes to some of the designs, which won't be finalized until site plan review. At its meeting on June 3, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use. If the special land use is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. So we also have Mr. Baines here, who's the owner representative, if anyone has questions. But Patrick, did you have anything to add to this from the Planning Commission?
I had nothing else to add beyond what's in the staff report, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
I think, Summer, did you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Baines, did you have anything to add? Okay. Any questions from the board? Michael?
Go ahead, Mike.
I was just gonna say, I just wanted to prep the board in advance. So as far as especially land use, I have no concerns. This is consistent with what I expected. I read through the Planning Commission minutes. It makes sense. I'm really excited for this project. I was really excited for this project. In the past, I wanted to remind the board that the liquor license review committee of the Township Board had met with Mr. Baines, initially looked at the concept prior to this special land use years ago, and we set aside one of our quota licenses for a liquor license for this facility, a Class C license. We've had it set aside for this project to recommend to the board for approval, and we have continued to have set that aside because we thought it was an excellent use for one of those. And so I just wanted to kind of prep the board that if this does pass and we go along the planning process, at some point, we will be considering providing one of our local governmental approval for one of our Class C quota licenses to the state of Michigan. So I just wanted to just alert that. Unfortunately, three of our board members aren't here tonight, but I'm sure they'll watch the video when we're done.
What is the capacity of this place? Like, how many people can it hold? I have a couple of questions, Mr. Baines, that's all. I'm excited about the project, but I have a few questions, yeah.
Thank you. And so as we, the capacity right now is about 1,000 people.
Okay.
Yeah, give and take.
Okay. And how many parking spots, Patrick? Do you said like 500 or?
About 810.
800. So do we, I was just concerned, like, there's a lot of trees in that area, so what are, like, you know, we, when we do development, of course, there is cutting of trees, but how can, like, and I was just wondering how you can bring in some of the planting back to that area? And, you know, it's like, rather than having like a big parking lot, you know, if it's surrounded by some greenery, that would kind of bring some of the trees back? Like, we don't, it would bring some green space back, and what are your thoughts on that? And just...
Yeah, sure. You know, definitely in any development, there are, there are trees need to be removed, for sure, to make a room for the development, but we are very mindful that we will save trees wherever we can to incorporate into our outdoor space. And then also, obviously, there is a tree ordinance the township has, so we will follow that and try to include in our landscaping design.
And is there, like, I was just wondering, do we need 800 parking spots? Is like, can we reduce, like, you know, I'm just wondering, because of the amount of concrete and, you know, some things that goes in, and that, you know, that's kind of, we're building and, you know, we're taking away the, building a lot of concrete parking spots kind of is not very environmental friendly. So that was my only thing, like, can we, do we have plans? Do you, will you be needing the 800 parking spots?
You know, right on the last count we had was 810. We had another review meeting last week, Friday. It came down, I think, by 16 spots. And also, we do have a plan to build a hotel site for future.
Okay.
And so we need to make sure that we have safeguarded that many parking spots for the hotel use as well.
Okay.
So we will be mindful, and, you know, we will...
All right.
Need to make sure that we, our guests have enough parking spaces needed, but we will optimize it.
Yeah. I think it's great that we don't, we really don't have any big banquet facilities in Canton, and this probably will be a great opportunity to have something, because if you have to rent something, we have to go to either Plymouth, Levonia, or Ann Arbor. So I'm appreciative that you're doing this project here and just have some questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're excited for it.
Summer?
I am in favor of this project. I'm happy that we are bringing the banquet center to Canton. I do have a question, and it came up in the Planning Commission, and I'm reading the notes, but just want to ask about, because it has been a few years since we did the first approval of the project, is there any way to ensure that once the trees are cut down, that the project does move forward?
This is something that we would want to wait on the tree removal permit until after the site plan process is concluded. We've had discussions with the applicant about the timing of the tree removal permit, and we've encouraged that process to take place after the site plan's approved, where we have a little bit more confidence of, that the project will in fact be going forward. So at the time of site plan review, that's around the time where state and county permits start to come in and the development becomes much more feasible. So some of the things that we can do at that point, and by that time, we may have some amendments to the tree ordinance, we can talk about holding performance guarantees for replanting based on any removed trees.
Thank you. And Patrick, you have in your notes that the exact parking spaces will be determined after site plan review as well?
That's correct. I looked at the notes again. There were, we counted 807 spaces, and so on a special land use plan, oftentimes, we encourage people to show full build-out, just to get the magnitude of what's proposed. When the applicant returns for site plan, if the special land use is approved, then we may see something a little bit different, and it's possible that there could be fewer spaces or land bank spaces in some cases where they build some spaces immediately, and then in a few years, if there's demand, they tap into those land bank spaces and build them. So that's one option that's on the table to be discussed during site plan review if we're looking to find ways to reduce parking.
And the parking would be contingent on the banquet center, not a future hotel site, a future hotel?
That would be my recommendation, is that it be based on the banquet center itself, and then if and when there's a hotel developed, then the parking for that facility could be addressed at that time. During our review of the banquet center site plan, we may do some calculations in terms of the number of cars for the hotel versus number of cars for a banquet center. So someone who's there to park for a banquet, you may not need additional parking spaces for a hotel, because they're already there anyway. It might be a matter of just proximity of parking the vehicle.
Thank you.
Are you still going to be having the technology to be able to show, like, the weddings across the world? I know that was one of the things you were looking at two years ago.
Yeah, absolutely. Matter of fact, the technology has evolved in the last two, three years, so definitely we will, we will be implementing that as well, sure. Absolutely.
That's great. So people in India can watch a wedding, or California can watch a wedding happening live here. Be part of it. Very good.
Grandma can travel, she can watch the wedding from her living room.
Very nice. So also, Patrick, I think the, I don't know, you're working on the tree ordinance right now. Would that be part of this, then?
Yeah, the, whatever the version of the tree ordinance is at the time that the site plan is reviewed, that's the one that would most likely be applied unless there's a subsequent amendment before the applicant applies for tree removal. So around that time, we'll probably have more clarity of the draft tree ordinance at this point and where we are with it in the coming months.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Item G6, consider approval of, oh, it's doing that. Consider approval of preliminary site plan and condominium ordinance variances for Cherry Hill Preserve.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, which is the approval of the preliminary site plan and condominium ordinance variances for Cherry Hill Preserve. Whereas project sponsor has requested preliminary site plan approval in planning application 052-SPP-78284, 19 detached single-family homes at 39540 Cherry Hill Road, parcel number 71-052-99-0042-000, parcel 71-052-99-0044-001, and parcel number 71-052-99-0044-002, as well as the approval of planning application 052-VCON-8227 for variances from the condominium ordinance to permit in non-boulevard cul-de-sac road with a cul-de-sac diameter of 96 feet. And...
And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary site plan for Cherry Hill Preserve and voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions, and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of variances from the condominium ordinance as the site plan meets the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and condominium ordinance, except where variances are approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals and Township Board as applicable. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the Cherry Hill Preserve preliminary site plan at 39540 Cherry Hill Road in planning application 052-SPP-7828, and does hereby approve variances from condominium ordinance in planning application 052-VCON-8227, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the satisfactory review of the master deed and bylaws by Township Legal Counsel.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. So maybe for, can we do that for resolutions, like, put all the numbers, the parcel numbers and everything on a table and reference it, or do you still have to read?
I've got a better idea.
Yes.
Here's my plan.
Yes.
And you'll find this in other communities. Patrick's experienced this in communities he's worked with. When you bring a formal resolution, you have to first give it to the clerk's office. They will assign a number. So in the future, the clerk says, I move to approve resolution number one. And then the board votes yes and no. Content of the resolution, which is the process in like six of the eight communities I reviewed their minutes for. So I would like to implement that when we move to our new.
Our new software.
Civic clerk software solution.
Good idea.
But I've been waiting to pilot it. So instead, I'm just punishing everybody by reading every single number.
That's why.
Letter out.
That's the reason.
To make sure I have the political will when I try to implement that reform.
All right. Thank you. The applicant proposes to develop 19 single-family homes on a 7.47 acre site in three parcels located on the north side of Cherry Hill between lots and the eastern township boundary. Project site is currently vacant. Units will be detached condos, so the areas outside of the structures will be common elements and not individual lots. There are one entrance proposed on Cherry Hill Road. There is one entrance. The site is zoned R4 Single Family Residential, which allows a maximum density of approximately 5.18 units per acre. The density, proposed density is 2.55 units per acre. Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary site plan on April 1st, '24, and recommended approval of variances from certain design requirements of the condo ordinance on May 6, 2024. If the preliminary site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a final site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. John, did you want anything? John Selinas?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Patrick, did you want to add anything?
Nothing else to add.
Summer? Okay. Do you want to, could you just give a list of the variances, like a high-level list, without reading through everything?
Sure. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the variances as they relate to the zoning Board of Appeals. And there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that requires a 25-foot setback from a wetland area. And there are wetlands in the site, and specifically in the middle of the site, around the perimeter. So it makes, the configuration of the wetlands in the site makes it very difficult to construct a development without any kind of wetland variances from that 25-foot setback, in addition to any permits that the applicant would be responsible for obtaining from the State Department of Eagle. And there are some of the units, as well as the road, that do encroach within the 25-foot wetland setback area. Those variances have been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And because they are variant, because they are standards in the zoning ordinance, they're subject to the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The other variances that are subject to Township Board review, as well as Planning Commission review, are variances from the condominium ordinance. The condominium ordinance is a separate ordinance from the zoning ordinance, and it regulates condominium developments, both attached and detached condominiums. And it has provisions there where if there are variances from any of the design standards of the condominium ordinance, then the Planning Commission holds a public hearing and makes a recommendation to the board, and the board makes a final decision on those variances. And in the condominium ordinance, there are two variances that are proposed. The first is that there, there have to be two points of access. And the way that the condominium ordinance addresses that is to require boulevards at the entrance. Boulevard entrances have mixed reviews, just because sometimes they're confusing to navigate. They don't always align with a driveway or a road across the street. So between the Planning Division and the Engineering Division, the more we talk about boulevard entrances, the less we like them for a number of reasons. As we become more built out, they're harder to put in and still have the traffic flow that we want, as opposed to just having a drive without a boulevard. So we, there is the one point of access to the development. The number of units of 19, it's below the threshold where the fire code would require a second point of access. So this is just a condominium ordinance standard. This isn't a variance from a fire code or anything like that. The other proposed variance is that the cul-de-sac diameter is required to be 110 feet across, which is a, is a huge cul-de-sac. That's something where one might see in a industrial development where you're turning semi-trucks around in a cul-de-sac, you might need 110 feet diameter. And based on the lot and trying to minimize the impact on the wetlands, the applicant has tried to minimize the diameter of that cul-de-sac. So our response to that was, we agree with minimizing the diameter of the cul-de-sac and making the wetland impacts minimal. However, it has to meet the fire code. And the fire code requires a cul-de-sac diameter of 96 feet. So both the fire marshal and engineering and planning divisions have recommended that that cul-de-sac would be met to meet the fire code. So our recommendation is for that variance, as long as that diameter is still compliant with the fire code. So those are, that's a summary of the variances that are recommended for approval.
Okay, I was looking also for the public benefits too. I don't know. It looks like you're looking at extending the sidewalk, and there is, trying to figure out why they didn't do that also, correct?
Yeah, we had some discussion on that, and I think that's something that will be reconciled during the engineering review. Right now, we're at the state of preliminary site plan review, and if this is approved, then we'll return for final site plan review in the coming months. Between preliminary and final site plan review, the project gets a detailed engineering review. And at that time, we're gonna try to push to have that sidewalk extended to the lot line. And when the engineers review the topography and what might be possible there, we'll see how possible it is to get that sidewalk to the boundary. And ultimately, that decision can be deferred to final site plan review pending the engineering review of that.
Does the board have any questions or comments?
So Patrick, as you said, that we are, because they're going to get the permits, the Eagle has to review there because they want to build over the wetlands. So I, that's my only concern that I have. Apart from that, just want to see what, where the project goes.
Michael?
I think it just looks, I'm excited, I think it looks like a greater development for that parcel, so.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider FFM Oil Exchange Business Condo Plan.
Now that you're on to my game, I'm just gonna read it quickly. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, the approval of the Business Condominium Site Plan for FFM Oil Change, whereas project sponsors requested condominium site plan approval for the commercial uses on the subject tax parcel at 45455 Michigan Avenue, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria, voted seven one, seven zero, excuse me, to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton Code of Ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the FFM Oil Exchange Business Condominium Site Plan on, in the subject planning application on the subject tax parcel at 45455 Michigan Avenue, subject to any modifications required by the Township Legal Counsel of the Master Deed and Bylaws.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. The applicant proposes to convert the current gas station, convenience store, and fast food restaurant building and oil change building at 45455 Michigan Ave. to a condo form of ownership where the gas station, convenience store, and fast food restaurant building, Unit 1, and oil change building, Unit 2, will be in separate ownership. Site plans were previously approved for the gas station, convenience store, fast food restaurant business, and the oil change business, and there are no development changes proposed to these plans. Therefore, the design and conditions of the approved site plan remains in effect. The proposed condominium will keep the parcel boundaries the same, but will convert the buildings into two separate units, which allows for different ownerships of these units. A condo form of ownership is common for multi-use commercial and industrial sites where each business owner-operator owns their own space within the site, but the group of owners form an association that is responsible for the common areas. At its meeting on June 3rd, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan. If the condo site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to record the master deed and officially create the units within the condominium. John, do you have any?
Nothing further for me. Thank you.
Patrick?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Summer?
Nothing to add.
Any questions for the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approval of ERP contracts with Tyler Technologies and with BSNA.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the execution of contracts between Canton Township and Tyler Technologies, and between Canton Township and BSNA. Further move to approve the necessary budget amendments disclosed in the Budget Implications section and the purchase orders outlined.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by, by Trustee Foster. The township worked with Plant Moran on contract negotiations of a master service agreement and statement work between Canton Township, Tyler Technologies, and BSNA. All parties have agreed on, and would like to proceed with executing these contracts, which will allow implementation to begin for Tyler and BSNA cloud-based ERP software. We had study sessions on this, and it's been budgeted, as stated in the agenda item, and we were looking forward to this, to upgrade some of these so we can make sure we're secure and we have software, as Clerk Seeger was describing earlier. Victor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing more, just that it's been a long time. We need to get going.
Yes. Questions or comments from the board? Summer?
I have a question. I've heard residents, business owners in the community talk about the permitting process, and supervisor indicated to me that this software would speed up the permitting process. So could you talk some about how it will do that?
Sure. If you notice here, we, we went through a lengthy period where we did evaluation and analysis of our existing, and then we went through RFP, and the result of the RFP indicated that we, our option, our best option would be what we call best-of-breed. The best-of-breed now divided the entire ERP landscape for us into two. One is the Tyler section, which will handle the financials as well as HR. And then the other side will handle what we call community development, and that will be BSNA. Now, with specific to your question, community development is the part that handles, you know, permitting and all those things. And then that particular one will be definitely changed from what we are currently using, CityView, which has really, it has a lot of limitations, let's put it that way, which was the reason why we really want to move away from it. The new one that we are hoping to migrate to will make life a lot more better. The public interface of it is a little bit easier and familiar to a lot of people because that's what most of the people in the surrounding neighborhoods are also using. So there will be some familiarity with it, not just with the residents, but also with the users internally. So when it comes to permitting, for instance, it will help expedite the process. Right now, I really don't want to rehash the woes of our residents when they go towards the permitting process because it can be cumbersome sometimes. And like I said, that's primarily one of the reasons why we want to move away from CityView.
We did discuss this also today. I think, John, do you want to talk about that a little bit, what we discussed about the permitting software?
Yeah, I think that it will expedite a lot of the issues for us, just being able to go to a seamless platform. We can schedule them, complete them, and close them out. I know there's little hiccups here and there with the current form that we have. Nothing that's, you know, gonna set us back. So I think this is something that I know our building inspectors and I believe engineering as well, because I know we do some inspections on the engineering side, have both viewed this, and they're anxious, just as well as everybody else, that'll help us speed everything up and get those inspections completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also know that, I think there were some items online stating that permits were being delayed and permitted, and Emma did look into it, along with our MSD, and they said there were no permits pulled on any of those items that had been listed as being held up. So we're kind of at a quandary, but we're reaching out to anyone who has any issues with the permitting, and we can help them out.
Thank you, and thank you, Emma. Oh, Emma left. Thank you, Emma.
You mean to tell me people were saying things on the internet that aren't true?
Yeah, can you believe it?
Shocking. I have a question. I see Wendy's not here, so, but my initial question was, so it looks like on the cash flow summary, when I look at the annual licensing, it looks like we were able to secure five, a five-year freeze on the annual licensing incremental increase for Tyler, which is, which is great, doesn't go up until 2030, and then it goes up in 2031, a pretty sizable amount. I guess my question is, do we know what those annual increases in licensing are gonna be for Tyler? And then I see we have about a two-year freeze on licensing for BSNA, and then it goes up incrementally at a slower rate than Tyler. I guess my only concern is, seven, eight years out, what kind of an escalator are we gonna see in this licensing? And do we, do we have an idea of what that looks like? I don't know if, Victor, you know that, or if that's a finance question?
I don't know the numbers particularly right now with regards to the existing. When we signed up for Tyler, the current one that we're using, and where we are right now, the, okay, every year, there's a gap of increase of about 3% to 5%. That's normal, all right? For licenses, that's 3% to 5%. However, a lot of things have happened in the industry that also affects this. In the industry, which is part of the reason why we're making this move, majority of solutions are no longer what they will sell to you to install in your environment. It's now subscription. And with subscription, prices are sort of calculated, there's a different calculator for subscription. Every year, you expect that the prices will go on, up, maybe between 5% to 10%. So what you see here in the proposal also touches on the projections based on what they've presented to us, because the services that we are signing up to is a cloud-hosted solution. It's no longer on-prem. I don't know if that gives you a picture of why this is?
No, yeah, I just, because what concerns me is from fiscal year '30 to '31, it's a 5% increase. And is that what I can, we will be expecting from Tyler going forward? And again, I mean, we've held it, we will have held it steady for five years, which is fantastic. I was just more kind of, just wondering if we would be building in a 5% contract escalator annually, which did seem a little bit higher to me than like an industry standard.
I would say this, that it is standard, right? It is standard when you negotiate a contract, particularly in a subscription base, they can freeze it up until towards the last one, all right? Because they know that this is the last, last year of the contract. That's what we see, as I explained earlier on, with regards to subscription services. And again, 5% is within the ballpark of what happens in this business.
Okay. So Victor and I, in 2022, penned a letter to the governor and some of our congresspeople, and also to the U.S. Conference of Mayor and also to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, stating that basically because of cybersecurity issues in the country, which are increasing as we know, we asked them to come up with a GSA schedule to protect everybody. It's not well-known, but a local community basically was hacked this week, and we started getting some signs of that, you know, and we closed it down to make sure we were protected. But even if you put up everything you can, if not everybody is protected, what happens is we can still have issues. And so we asked them to create a GSA schedule so that this would be more affordable for all communities, and we could keep our costs down versus, you know, having them jump up and down. So we are working on that and pushing that. After that happened on Friday, I made sure I resent that letter to the governor's office and asking for these prices to be fixed as government prices. Anybody else? Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider awarding a bid for the engineering of the Cherry Hill Village Phase Zero parking lot.
Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the Cherry Hill Village Phase Zero parking lot to Anglin Civil LLC for a total cost of $520,813.04, pending legal review.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Foster. In March of '24, a request for proposal was advertised for the Cherry Hill Village Phase Zero parking lot to include installation of a new public asphalt parking lot, concrete curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk, on-street parallel parking spaces, stormwater, wayfinding signage, and landscaping on a township-owned parcel. As a result, five bids were received and reviewed by a panel comprised of members from the municipal services, community development, and finance. Panel evaluated each company and scored them based on the evaluation criteria provided in the RFP. As a result, the committee is recommending Anglin Civil LLC for a project cost of $406,254.2, with additional 30% construction contingency of $120,187,062, for a total project cost of $520,813.04, pending legal review. And I just want to point out that this is part of the financing and capital outlay land improvements in our Cherry Hill Village work. John, do you want anything to add? LaFever?
Happy to take questions. This is kind of our next step, right in the long process of the development of Cherry Hill Village. We're excited. We've got the next two agenda items here that'll get us closer to that process. I know we had a great groundbreaking last week to kind of celebrate some movement here. And this will allow us to award a couple of jobs to companies to help us start moving earth and move towards getting some projects started. So very excited and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider approval to award bid for Cherry Hill Village water feature.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to award the Cherry Hill Village water feature to ILE Excavating Incorporated for a total project cost of $580,405, pending legal review.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Ganguly. In April 2024, community development advertised a request for proposal of the Cherry Hill Village water feature. As a result, three bids were submitted and reviewed by a panel comprised of municipal services, community development, and finance staff. The panel evaluated each company and scored them based on the evaluation criteria provided in RFP. After careful review, the panel selected ILE Excavating Incorporated to redesign the existing detention ponds to meet regulatory standards and conform to future developments in the adjacent area of the Cherry Hill Village. ILE Excavating proposed project cost is $504,700, with an added 15% contingency of $75,705, for a total project cost of $580,405, which is part of our Cherry Hill Village funding that were received from our ARPA funds, pending legal review. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Just noted on the budget side, both of these projects came in at or below our budgeted projections, so we're very pleased with that. But otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G11, consider approving the annual, oh, sorry, this got away from me again, Entrado Next Gen 911 Maintenance Agreement.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the annual renewal of the Entrado Next Gen 911 Maintenance Agreement in the amount of $28,493.07.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Ganguly. The police and fire departments are requesting to renew the Entrado Next Gen 911 Maintenance Agreement in the amount of $28,493.07. Entrado is the sole provider of Next Gen 911 software utilized within the 911 dispatch councils. Director Bowden, do you want to add anything?
I do not, but I can answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G12, consider reappointment to the Canton Tax Board of Review.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees approve the reappointment of Assam Mohammed to the Canton Tax Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on 12/31/2025.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Assam Mohammed, who has served as a member of Canton's Tax Board of Review, is seeking reappointment following the expiration of his term. Canton's assessing department works directly with the Board of Review and has reported that Assam has provided excellent service, excuse me, has good attendance, and has completed the training required of all Board of Review members. Just checking to see if he was on, and he is not. So he's been reappointed, and does the board have any questions? I'm doing a great job.
No, and actually, I think he was supposed to be reappointed earlier this year.
Yes.
And slipped by us, but yeah.
Exactly. Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, next we have public comment. Three-minute public comment. I'm going to go online to see if we have any online. Please raise your hand if you want public comment online. Okay, in the room, three-minute public comment.
Dan McCausen, 328 North Hagerty Road. I came tonight to look at the budget. There was no documents for the public to see, so I just had to take a couple notes. Clarification, do we have $97 million in unfunded liabilities? That's what I wrote down. Correct me if I'm wrong. Gentlemen, what the presentation said, there's uncertainty in conditions in the future and bonding, and we're running at a 14.85% fund balance. On a home in another jurisdiction, and we get a frozen tax every year, or we get a tax rollback to the residents. Here, I think we're looking at a 5.1% multiplier yearly with no end in sight. That's not just this community, but the state of Michigan altogether. I don't know what we're doing to address that, but property values are not going to climb that high to support that. And when you always talk about affordable housing, I don't know how anybody's going to afford that in the future. Because if you look at other jurisdictions and how they do it, they have other avenues, some of them even called what's called the SOH program, which stands for Save Our Home, where they will adjust the taxable value basis on how long you've owned the home, so you're not taxed out of the home. So even though we have the homestead cap here, if we are spending down to the 14.85%, that's still physically responsible. I can see that, but you're on the bottom of it. And when the gentleman started talking about bonding, bonding in this interest arena that we have is really not feasible. But again, can you clarify that it's $97 million in unfunded liability? If that's correct or not, or am I wrong?
Yes, you can come, these are public comments.
Okay, all right, so that's what I'd be looking because...
You can go to clerk's office tomorrow and look at this.
And when, you're saying we can see that online tomorrow, starting tomorrow?
That's what the finance director said.
Okay. So I would say that we should, if that is the case, which I'm not saying it is, I think we need to focus on that number right there, on how to lower that number, that $97 million. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Public comment over. Any staff comment before we adjourn?
Just want to add that our Thursday night concert series will kick off this Thursday night, June 27th. We've got a classic rock band, so first of eight concerts that happen throughout the summer. They're very popular and have been around for many decades here in Canton, so I know a lot of people are excited about that. So hope to see everybody out there for that. Starts at 7:00 PM on Thursday.
That'd be great.
Thursday.
Thank you.
Excluding the Fourth of July.
Fourth of July, that's right. Anyone else? No? You're right, the Fourth of July is next week, so happy Fourth of July. That's very good. All right, any board comments? Tanya?
Not really. Wishing happy Fourth, and it's interesting that on the Fourth of July, the country that we got independence from is having their own election. But I have a question for John. When we were, I heard that the farmer's market is moving to the Village Arts Factory. Is it because, is there some construction happening there?
That is certainly the hope. So the movement of the market, yeah, will be dependent on the construction of the new pavilion, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we are scoring those bids currently and hope to bring that to you all for approval soon. And then, once we've set up a construction schedule, we'll make a decision as to when the market will finish where. So it all depends on the company selected and their timeline. But yes, that is a potential. That's kind of been our backup through the years as we've planned for a replacement for the barn.
Okay. Yeah, if it's moving temporarily, I think it's a good thing for the Village Arts Factory too. Like, there will be quite a lot of movement within, we can do events there together.
Yeah, there are a lot of upsides, yeah, to both options, so. Yeah, should be a nice change of pace if and when needed.
Thank you. Summer?
Not much to say. Happy Fourth of July Independence Day. Since Tanya brought up the elections in the UK, I will mention that John Adams said that Independence Day would be celebrated on July 2nd for generations to come. So, happy July 2nd or July 4th.
Happy July 2nd. Michael?
This is the first time I've been around since Liberty Fest. I got to say, it was a fantastic Liberty Fest, and really, really proud of the work that the staff put in. Grateful for public safety. I was, I remember Saturday night, I was out with my kiddo in a very large crowd when I saw news of the shooting at the Rochester Hills splash pad. And being a dad and thinking about that, I can tell you, I felt a visceral reaction to hearing that news while I was in a crowd that large. And seeing the Wayne County sheriffs there, and Canton Police Department there, and the Fire Department there, and the number of volunteers, the CERT team, and all of the township employees, allowed me to feel some reassurance that we were a community that supported that event and made me feel much better. And so I'm really grateful for that. Very sad to the community of Rochester Hills for what they have to go through with that. The clerk of Rochester Hills was unable to attend our clerks conference last week because an employee's child and wife was in critical condition because of that shooting. And so she was unable to attend, and she is on the board with me. But we amended, and we moved forward. And so I do think it's important that we recognize the role that gun violence plays, especially gun violence, in public spaces directed at children in an attempt to elicit a certain response from us. And then, too, that communities support each other. We reach out to our neighbors, and we support each other. On top of that, I understand there was a good listening session at the temple last week. I was unable to attend because I was at the clerks conference, and I am on the board for our Clerks Association.
You're the second vice president now, right?
I'm the second vice president. Next year, I'll be the first vice president.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. And, you know, well, I will if, you know, depend, if there's an election, obviously, between now and then. But thank you, yeah. So that was a good conference as well. Lots of good, lots of good public, lots of good professional development and things like that. Our office won an award for cybersecurity and for security. Typically, you know, and I can say that I had nothing to do with it, right? So I'm really proud of my staff on that. But I was unable to attend that meeting for that reason. And then I'm very excited for Fourth of July. That said, we will be mailing out absentee ballots to about 15,500 voters starting Thursday. So that's in two days. We are packaging them at the clerk's office, and they should arrive in people's mailboxes. Some may get there Friday, a lot of them will get there Saturday, and the bulk of them will get there by Monday of next week. I would propose, if you are a voter who has signed up for the automatic ballot list and you provided your email address, you will get a notification on Thursday letting you know that we have mailed those ballots out. And it will give you information about if you don't receive your ballot by July 5th, the day after our nation's birthday, to contact my office, and we'll try to figure out what's going on with that ballot and why it didn't get to you. But that's a sizable amount of Canton Township. We're very, very excited about that, and we're excited to do our second election with early voting for the first time this year. So super, super grateful for that. You know, the end.
Thank you. I wanted to tell somebody, everybody, about what happened today. So there are bad actors out there, and it is increasing. Just last two days, I was getting a lot of calls from scammers saying things like, "Call me, call me, call me." So I was figuring, okay, maybe I better see what's going on. I called, and they pretended they were from Amazon, and they said that people were trying to hack my Amazon account in New York, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. And I said, okay, well, I haven't been in any of those states. And so they basically said, okay, we're going to transfer you to our Social Security Department. And I said, why would Amazon have a Social Security Department? And then they hung up on me. But what I'm saying is, people would fall for that, you know? She was trying to act like she's very helpful, to transfer me to Social Security to take care of this, so be careful. I mean, they don't, they will call everybody. I know our police department gets calls, you know, our police members do. So I wrote up a report on the Attorney General's line and the Federal Trade Commission, but also will put something out there because unfortunately, if you know vulnerable people in your family, whether they be seniors or your young adults, make sure you tell them that they are, don't ever give anybody your Social Security number, and beware that these things are increasing, as we see also with the hacking of a local community recently. But I also want to say, as everybody said, you know, the Liberty, we had the Liberty Fest, the Eid Celebration, the same weekend, Summer Palooza, you know, public safety, and our staff did an excellent job. I know everybody, you know, as usual, hit it out of the ballpark, and we're very proud of you, so thank you for everything you did. I didn't hear anything bad. Whenever anything, there was an issue with anything, it was taken care of right away, and I've heard nothing but great things, even during the storm. You know, there was a call by Leisure Services and Public Safety to shut down for an hour and a half because of the tornado that hit Livonia, and you did, you made a decision that was the best for the residents, and thank you for doing that, because you kept the residents in mind. So thank you for always doing that. All right. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by both Trustee Foster and Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.